Good evening. This seventy-second meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be done by Reverend Dr. Jason Jordan Griffin of Union Memorial United Methodist Church. Following the invocation, we will have the pleasured allegiance.
Omnipotent, omniscient, and omnipresent God, who has brought us all the way into these last thirty days of two thousand nineteen, we welcome your holy presence into these hollowed halls in this sacred space. Infuse us here with the more of your love, joy, hope, and peace that we might experience and embrace the true meaning of this season. We invite your wisdom to fall afresh upon those who have faithfully answered your call to serve as our elected officials and all who support them in this great undertaking of caring for the needs of our city. Strengthen this body on every leaning side that they might continue to rise up and light the path for the next generation. Allow your compassion, encourage, creativity, and collaboration to be the order of this day, so much so that the results from the work of this day and those that remain in this year will usher in a new wave of pride in our city that stretches from Park Heights to Federal Hill, that empowers from Cherry Hill to Canton, that inspires from Edmanson Village to Fells Point, that unifies from Evergreen to Westport, that motivates from Fells Point to Harlem Park. In this place, we declare that your will shall be done on earth as it is in heaven, in us, through us, and even in spite of us. Have your way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Michelle Swazo from The Food Project.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to share what we're doing in southwest Baltimore. So, The Food Project is a program of U.N. Power of Maryland, and we have been in southwest Baltimore for five years now. We started off on the streets right after the riots. We were doing street outreach on Monroe and Ramsey, and we started to build relationships with the families and the children in the community. There were so many children in line at night, we knew that we needed a safe space, and I don't know how many people remember the incident with Councilwoman Ricky Spector. So, it was two of our young men that were in street outreach that were involved in that incident, and we had reached out to her to ask her to come back to the community and to see how the children were crumbling with the buildings. I really have never seen anything like this and never thought that I could travel fifteen minutes from my home to a place that seemed like it was a war zone. She was, at that time, they were shutting down the school and they were going to shut down the recreation center, and she helped us to fight to get the old Samuel F.B. Morse Elementary School and also John Bullock and the local coach. So, ever since then, it's just been a wonderful opportunity. We now have a safe space for the children. We're able to do after-school programming. We're doing dinners Monday through Friday for the children and their families, and whatever's left over, then the children get to feed the homeless in the community, and it's built like a really nice relationship, you know, with, you know, because usually, I think there's probably tension between the teenagers and the addicted on the street, and this, you know, just creates a really nice dynamic. What we've also done, because what the children, what the kids have told me is what's important to them is to be able to have a job. Jobs are the number-one thing for the teens because so many of them are supporting themselves. I mean, we have a lot of kids that are, their parents are selling the food stamps, selling their medication. If you're a twelve to eighteen, you cannot go to social services and say, "I need food." You're not going to go to the Franciscan Center to go get a free dinner. And so, so many of our teens are put in a position of risky behavior, and I really feel this is the root of Baltimore's problem right now, is that the kids are out there trying to survive, and then you have this situation of, you know, just they're, anyhow, it becomes endless because when one person is killed, then it just creates this endless cycle. So, what we've found out, sorry, I have to take a breath here. What we've found is food for us has been the connector, and from this point here, we're working to create jobs out of the kitchen, so we have a social enterprise now called CD Nutty. These young men here are growing the business. You should be so proud of them, and I just want to say, the kids in our neighborhood are so talented and gifted when given the right resources and opportunities. There is nothing that they can't do. And so, I just, I reach out to everybody to say, "We need to invest in them," all right? And I feel like so many people are scared of the teens, and part of it is because they're left to fend for themselves, but when given the resources, there is nothing that they can't do. And right now, our goal is to take CD Nutty into the Oriole Stadium, and we want it, the next year after that, we want to take it national, and we would just want to keep on growing the jobs as much as we can. In addition, behind the scenes, we deal with crisis management for our families. So, we are helping with housing, with case management, and something that I never thought in a million years, we are doing mental health. We started off with a behavioral therapist, and now we have Lakeisha Ashley as a clinical therapist, and we have twenty family members and kids signed up for therapy, and it's growing, so we're bringing it in-house. And I think that if we can do this in southwest Baltimore, there's no reason that we can't do it in other pockets of the community, and especially if we're dealing with, we're operating out of a school that was shut down. There are other schools that are shut down, sitting there with kitchens that could be put to use, creating other jobs, and bringing these other services right to the communities. Don't make them have to travel out of their neighborhoods for a job, you know, for experience. And on top of that, we are now working with an Air Force Colonel who's developed a system that we're putting into place where all of the kids are going to, everything's going to be tracked on the computer, and we are going to be able to take all the skills and tasks that they are gaining right now. It's going to be creating a resume for them because so much of what you learn is actual experience, and in addition, they will be connected to mentors and therapy as needed. So, I just want to quickly bring Lakeisha up. She's going to explain what we're doing with the mental health.
Hello. Good evening. As Michelle stated, my name is Lakeisha Ashley. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I was actually brought into The Food Project just by being, first of all, I'm from New York, but I was transplant here, went to Morgan State University and got degrees in social work. I started to find the need is, I cannot talk to you about depression. I cannot talk to you about anxiety if your basic needs are not being met. Stop eating for twelve hours and then let me know how you will react to your basic stimuli in the community. That's what we are dealing with. So, we're dealing with our young men and our young women who are going to school, asked to do basic tasks that they cannot perform. So, what we do is, we do get them in-house. We bring them into the community center. We feed them. We feed their family. You have a safe space in order to do your homework, get mentoring if you need it. We connect you with the proper channels. I am now able to address your mental health needs, your parents' mental health needs, also getting you connected with entitlements. Some of these children, some of their parents don't even know what they have and what they are entitled to in order to get themselves on track. Housing is a huge piece. We have, probably have siblings that are taking care of siblings that don't have paperwork. You know, these are basic needs and basic things that we are trying to tackle right now, and any support is needed at this point. We're just trying to build healthy families, and part of that part is building healthy individuals that have healthy communities, and it's just a cycle, and it's exactly where we need to start.
Thank you. A roll call. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. The journal was adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four seven zero Charter Amendment, City Council, exercise of legislative powers for the purpose of modifying and clarifying the city council's authority to legislate certain powers and duties of all units of the executive branch and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors, Henry, Dorsey, Bullock, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pulling up a list right now of charter agencies, and technology being what it is, it's a little slow, but the Department of Finance, the Department of Law, the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, the Department of Health, the Department of Recreation and Parks, Department of Planning, Legislative Reference, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of General Services, all of these agencies are actually set up in the Charter of Baltimore City, and most of them have a provision in the Charter early on in the description of the agency saying that the director or commissioner or whatever the head of that agency is has the, and then it goes on to describe the broad-sweeping power of dealing with whatever the issues are that that agency handles. And it seems to make a lot of sense, and you would expect that in an organizational document. The problem, Mr. President, is that over the years, on occasion, when the council finds a need to try to get an agency to do something that it does not do the way that the people of Baltimore would like it done, we have been told by the Law Department that we cannot introduce, or we can introduce, but we can't pass a bill doing so because it would interfere with the charter authority of that agency or its director. And as I have said before, it seems inappropriate that we would not be able to at least have the public conversation over whether the agency should or should not be doing that. So, all this charter amendment does is it adds one little catch-all, closes that one loophole in the beginning of the charter, and says that any agency, any commission, any board can do anything that the mayor and city council direct it to do by ordinance, as long as it does not interfere with some other provision in the charter, and it gives us the ability to actually have a conversation. It does not take away the mayor's ability to veto such legislation. It does not take away anybody, any agency's ability to lobby against such legislation. What it gives the council is the fighting chance to have the legislation in the first place. And if I could continue for just a minute, I have introduced such charter amendments previously, both in this term and in last, that are not about eliminating the strong mayor system of government as much as they're about trying to shift the power dynamic between the mayor and the council a little bit more equally so that this branch of government, the people's body, the one that is most directly responsive and engaged by the citizens, this body has an even chance to actually make public policy in cooperation with the mayor. And so, I thank my sponsors, and I look forward to this conversation when this charter amendment and others are considered. I will also point out that as with some other members of this body, I will not be here after this charter amendment were to go into effect. If we pass this and if this goes into effect in the next term, this is not about individuals looking to take or receive power from other individuals. This is about having a structure of government that makes sense and really works regardless of the people and the personalities in the offices at those times, and thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Please add Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. This is Councilwoman Snead as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash.
Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four seven one Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities, effective date modification. For the purpose of modifying the effective date of ordinance nineteen dash three zero eight Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities and providing for a special effective date, sponsor City Council President for the administration.
This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four seven two Young Adult Advisory Commission for the purpose of establishing the Young Adult Advisory Commission, providing for the commission's composition, terms of office, officers, meetings, quorum, and rules of procedure, establishing the duties of the Young Adult Advisory Commission and generally relating to the Young Adult Advisory Commission. Sponsors, Snead, President Scott, Dorsey, Burnett, Henry, Clark.
Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. Colleagues, this bill is really about engaging some young people. I know we have the youth commission, but the target audience for this would be people in their twenties and thirties. I've been having conversations with that age group who have been saying like they have some concerns and they feel like they're not being heard when it's around small businesses and when it's around transportation, and so, we just want to make sure that we're grabbing and we're listening to the people, that we want to move here, that we want to live here, that we want to raise their children here, and so, I just think they should be a part of the conversation and part of the dialogue that we're having here at City Hall.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four seven.
Please add Councilman, go back a second, please add Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four seven three Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District. Variances, seventeen fifty-eight Park Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight Zoning District on the property known as seventeen fifty-eight Park Avenue as outlined in red in the accompanying plaque, and granting variances for certain gross floor area per unit type, bulk regulations, and off-street parking requirements. Sponsor, Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one eight two R. Informational Hearing, Banking Deserts, for the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Director of the Department of Finance, the CEO of the Baltimore Development Corporation, and the Director of the Department of Planning to discuss the prevalence of banking deserts in Baltimore City. Sponsor, Henry, President Scott, Dorsey, Burnett, Pinkett, Middleton, Clark, McCray, Bullock.
Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few years ago, when the Bank of America at Thirty-Fourth and Greenmount closed in Councilman Clark's district, I noticed that that left Greenmount and York Road, one of the major arteries in the city, without a bank south of Belvedere Avenue. And I reached out and spoke to a number of people about the fact that that seemed odd, that in this entire stretch, there was no bank on an extensive commercial corridor. And what I was told at the time was, oh, well, you know, banks are getting away from brick-and-mortar branches, and they're trying to encourage people to use banking apps on phones, and it was really nothing, there was nothing nefarious or malicious about it. It was just the evolution of the industry. But then, over the last couple of months, I've seen billboards for new banks coming to town and new banks opening up new branches, and I've noticed that where they're opening new branches tend to be in commercial areas where there are already several other banks. And so, I thought, maybe we should have a public conversation about why some neighborhoods get two or three or four banks and other neighborhoods have to drive or take a bus or walk a mile or more in order to find an actual bank. And so, I thank you for my, I thank my co-sponsors for their support, and I look forward to a robust public discussion at the hearing sometime early next year. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Please add Councilman Schifler as a co-sponsor.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one eight three R. Informational Hearing, Fish Kills, for the purpose of requesting the Director of the Department of Public Works to testify at an informational hearing regarding a recent pipe break that spilled chlorinated water into dead-run stream and killed two thousand fish. Sponsor, Burnett, Dorsey, Bullock, Henry, Pinkett, Middleton, Clark.
Please add Council President Scott as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The intent of this is to investigate a recent pipe break in Baltimore County but impacted Baltimore City, and of course, as most of the folks know, we do the maintenance on both the county and city-side public works. The leak, water leak caused the death of thousands of fish, and this is sort of compiled on to both the conversations that we've had in committee on wastewater backups into people's homes and wastewater and pollutants into our waterways. So, this is an extension of those conversations and a real need to push DPW to, one, better respond to these sort of crises, but two, have a, present a comprehensive plan for their infrastructure enhancements to prevent this from moving forward. So, look forward to discussion in committee.
Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one eight four R. Informational Hearing, Death of Trina Cunningham, for the purpose of inviting the Director of DPW, the Acting Bureau Chief of the Department of Finance's Office of Risk Management and Division of Safety, and the Plant Manager of the Patapsco Wastewater Treatment Plant to discuss the circumstances surrounding the death of Trina Cunningham as well as worker safety at all wastewater treatment plants. Sponsor, Snead, President Scott, Schleifer, Dorsey, Burnett, Henry, Bullock, Pinkett, Middleton, McCray, Clark.
Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor. Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. You know, this is just a sad situation of what happened. I believe that anybody who goes to work, we all have intentions of coming back home, but Ms. Cunningham didn't make it back home, and so, I think we should find out really what's going on because after that report was released and in reference to what was happening down at the plant, it just brings up other questions and concerns about what's happening in Baltimore City and what do we need to do to protect all workers in Baltimore City. So, I just want to bring people here to answer some questions to make sure that this never happens again, and I understand that there's a lawsuit, so some things can't be answered, but we still want to go on record for asking those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee. Consent Calendar. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Mr. President, I'd like to move short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Committee reports. We will now move on to bills on second reader. Executive Appointments Committee.
EA nineteen dash zero two five five Mia J. Bloom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on November the twentieth, two thousand nineteen. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved. Chair recognizes, oh, I'm sorry.
EA nineteen dash zero two five six Nicolette A. LaSalle, Ph.D.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved.
EA nineteen dash zero two five seven Donna Davis.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved. Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three six seven Rezoning, one twenty-nine and one thirty-one South Schroeder Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill that are on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one six Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District. Variance, two thousand five West Baltimore Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Sorry, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four two one Rezoning, Rear Portions of sixty-two forty and sixty-two forty-two Bologna Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four three Gun Offender Registration, Additional Violations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schifler.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee heard this bill on November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. There are technical amendments on your desks. I'd like to move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye. All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Schifler.
I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero three Fair Election Fund Establishment and Administration. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one five Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District. Variance, seventeen hundred West Franklin Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one eight Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District. Variance, ten forty-seven North Caroline Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero one, excuse me, zero four one nine Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R-seven Zoning District. Variance, twenty-three ten Utah Place. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three two Campaign Signs in Residential Areas, Repeal of Earliest Date Requirement. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton. Welcome back, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills that have to be heard in the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Bill number nineteen dash oh three eight nine will be heard on Wednesday, December the eleventh at eleven a.m. here in council chambers. It's the High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Citywide Eligibility for Tax Credit. Sponsor, Councilmember Bill Henry. Also, the taxation. Also, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number nineteen dash oh one six eight R on Thursday, December nineteenth, at ten a.m. in council chambers. It's the Growing the Film Industry in Baltimore. Sponsor, Councilwoman Leon Pinkett. And also, on Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty nineteen, will hear Bill number nineteen dash zero one six nine R, which is at ten oh five a.m. here in council chambers, which is an investigative hearing, Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, Councilmember Bill Henry.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a reminder, tomorrow at five thirty p.m., we'll have a hearing here in the chambers in the Education and Youth Committee on our fiscal commitment to supporting the recommendations of the Cohen Commission, and our need to fund our schools. It will be televised, and I look forward to seeing many folks in our community tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Also, just as a reminder, the Transportation Committee will hear the two bills to renew the franchises with MTA for the light rail and for the metro this Wednesday at two p.m. And next Wednesday at three p.m., the Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on the state of the Central Maryland Regional Transportation Plan. And that'll be a joint presentation by Baltimore City DOT and the MTA. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty, beginning at five p.m. here in the council chambers for Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one six five R, Be More Clean, Coordinated Agency Community Cleanup and Maintenance Strategy. The hearing will be televised on cable, cable TV twenty-five, Tarm TV.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be having a hearing on Tuesday, January fourteenth, at three p.m. for City Council Bill nineteen zero three eight three, City Streets Closing, Burnsham and Alley, two ten-foot alleys bounded by North Gay Street, Oliver Street, North Washington Street, and Federal Street. That'll be at three p.m., followed at three oh five p.m. for a hearing for City Council Bill nineteen zero one six six R, Informational Hearing, Small Harlers Program and Bulk Trash Program, sponsored by Councilman Henry. Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold two hearings on Thursday, December twelfth, first at two p.m., Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 three R, Quarterly Budget Briefings, and then at two ten p.m., City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 four R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools. Mr. President, I move to suspend Rules ten two to announce a hearing.
Oh, without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary Committee will hold hearing tomorrow on Bill nineteen dash zero four six eight, Child First Authority Updating at the Request of the Administration. Judiciary Committee will also hold three other hearings tomorrow at ten a.m., the first being nineteen dash zero four five seven, Elected Officials Financial Disclosure. This is a work session at the request of Councilman Dorsey. Second being nineteen dash zero four five nine, City Property Naming the Courthouse East Building to be the Elijah E. Cummings Courthouse at the request of the administration. And the third one being nineteen dash zero four two four, Corrective Bill two thousand nineteen, General, at the request of the Department of Legislative Reference. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Regular announcements, regular announcements. I first ask that Councilman Middleton honor a moment of silence for the now three hundred and thirteen victims of homicide in Baltimore City that we lost, and those that we continue to lose to the opioid crisis as well. Regular announcements, all right. Please note that the clearing of the bill status can be found on page seven of your agenda. The deadline is Thursday. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Thursday, December fifth, twenty nineteen, at four p.m., not five p.m., at four p.m. to be in time for lighting of the monument. And also, may we have a moment of silence for Mr. G.I. Johnson, former Baltimore City NAACP President, and also a longstanding member of the Baltimore City Aging Commission. He represented AARP on commission, and was a strong advocate for our senior population in the city. And also, a moment of silence for the three thirteen victims of homicide and their families, and also the families that are suffering from the opioid epidemic. And thank you.
Thank you. There being no further biddens, this concludes the seventy-second meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.